I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Debbie, would you start with the roll?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzaska.
We do have a quorum this evening. Thank you all. Next item we'll do is we'll jump around just a little bit. We'll do item B for public participation first this evening, which is the Arbor Day Contest winners. Christina?
Thank you. Good evening. For the second year, our beautification committee hosted an Arbor Day photo contest, poster contest, open to local students, grades second, third, fourth, and fifth. We're excited to announce this year's winners of the 2025 Arbor Day Tree Poster Contest. This year's theme was Trees Plant a Cooler Future, inspired creativity and environmental awareness among our young artists. We are proud to recognize three outstanding elementary school students whose artwork captured the importance of trees in creating a greener, cooler planet. Please join us in celebrating the following artists. As your names are read, if you can come up and receive your prize gift bag from Trustee Brzaska, who is also the Chair of our Beautification Committee, we would like to get a picture of all of our winners and the Beautification Committee members who are here this evening. Our third place winner this year is Emmeline Cobb with her poster titled Where Are the Trees? At Lakewood Creek Elementary School. In second place is Eva Balls with her poster titled In the Future. Eva is a fourth grader at Lakewood Creek Elementary School. And this year's first place winner is Amanda Larby with her poster titled Trees Are Our Future Forever, Our Oxygen and Life, and she is a fourth grader at Lakewood Creek Elementary School.
Go Coyotes!
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And to the three of you winners tonight, please keep drawing, okay? And keep being creative and submit next year. All right. Thank you. All right. The next item we have tonight is a Police Week proclamation. I'll read the proclamation and entertain a motion for approval. We have Police Week of May 11th through 17th, 2025. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Village of Montgomery play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Village of Montgomery. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas it is important that all citizens of Montgomery observe Friday, May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And now therefore, as President of the Village of Montgomery, I call upon all citizens of Montgomery and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I direct the flag of the United States to be displayed at half-staff on all village government buildings on May 15th in conformance with the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? This is video number four. Anna Carey, thanks. Come on down.
Thank you. We are proud to introduce the next video. This is the fourth in our series of We Are Montgomery. Tonight's video features Kevin, Public Works Maintenance Worker II and Resident of Montgomery for more than two decades. We are proud of all of our staff, many of whom not only serve our community but choose to call it home. It's a unique perspective that strengthens our identity, commitment to our residents, and fuels the spirit of who we are. We chose to show this video today as it highlights our Public Works Department showcasing the shared pride, purpose, and sense of belonging that make the Village of Montgomery truly special. It seems very fitting for our next item on our agenda, the Public Works Week proclamation. I want to take a moment to thank Kevin, Erica, Gina, Debbie, and many other staff and elected officials who have held supporting roles in the videos that we've seen thus far. This has turned into a very special project and one that we should all be very proud of.
Kevin, this might be a little awkward for you.
My name's Kevin. I work with the Village of Montgomery Public Works Department. I've been with the Village for going on seven years now. Living in the community and working for the village at the same time, it makes me take a lot of pride in what I do, and not just what I do, but what we as a staff do altogether. I mean, when I go out and hear a concern a resident has, it makes me want to address it because if it was my concern, I would want it addressed. So it makes it a personal connection to each and every resident that I interact with. In '04, my family moved us out here to Fairfield Foxmore neighborhood. So I've been a resident of Montgomery since '04. You know, sticking around here, close to work, for me is important. I like to be available when things go, when we have water main breaks, when snow happens. I like to be able to come in quickly and get here. If there is ever an emergency, I can respond really quick. For my wife and I, it's just a great neighborhood, great, great village to raise a family. And my wife also works in Montgomery. So it's just, Montgomery's home. It's where we are. I think the average resident doesn't know how much Public Works is involved in. I mean, we do snow plowing, street repairs, grass cutting, garbage picking, street signs, streetlights, stoplights, tree maintenance, emergency road closures, events set up. I think because Montgomery has a little bit of that small town vibe, and I know myself, as well as a few other guys that are in the Public Works staff, live in Montgomery. So as a whole, we really just care about what we're doing. We care about making it a better place for the future, and not just for our future, but for future generations to come.
Perfect. All right. So with that, tonight, we are proud to recognize the dedicated professionals who keep our community running. As we present the 2025 Public Works Week proclamation, we honor the essential services provided by our Public Works team for maintaining our roads and water systems to ensure our public spaces are clean, safe, and accessible. Their hard work often happens behind the scenes, but their impact is seen and felt throughout the Village of Montgomery. So I'll read the National Public Works Week proclamation for May 18th through 24th, 2025. People, Purpose, Presence. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Village of Montgomery. Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all level of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's water supply, transportation, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other infrastructure facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and the children of the Village of Montgomery to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding in the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, as President of the Village of Montgomery, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week, and I urge all citizens to join with representatives It's a public hearing on the vacation of a street right-of-way for Elliot Avenue. This is the public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing, and then Sonya, would you give us of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, a synopsis?
Thank you, President Brawley. Part of state statute says that we do have to have
and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers,
a public hearing before we can vacate any right-of-way and give that property to the
managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to
adjacent property owners. So in this case, if Elliot Avenue is going to be vacated to
protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
the Wayside Cross St. Olaf Development, we need to conduct this public hearing before
All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you. Picture.
we can take any action on the vacation of the right-of-way. So it was published in the paper. We have the right-of-way public hearing, and then we don't have to take action tonight. It's just a public hearing. That will come with the ordinances, with the recommendations for the Wayside Cross application.
And there is no action item on the agenda for this. This is simply the required public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And that would come back for a vote at the same time as project approvals would, right?
Correct.
So we won't be vacating the right-of-way if there isn't a project?
Correct.
Okay. All right. The public hearing is open. Is there anybody who wishes to make public comment? All right. Hearing done. Anybody online? Nobody online? All right. I'll close the public hearing. And then the last item before we go back to the top is public comment period. This is the two-minute opportunity, any member of the public to address the board on any topic. Anybody?
Denny?
Don't do it. Did we get any written or anybody online? Okay. All right. So we have none this evening. All right. We'll jump back up to the top here and do the swearing-in, which I think most of the room is here for, of our elected officials. Tonight, we have the most distinguished Chief of Police to be swearing us in. So I do appreciate him filling in this role. I think it means a lot to all of us that he's willing to do that for us. So with that, staff had decided me first. Awesome. Thank you. Next up is Village Trustee Ben Brzaska. He's the tallest ever village board member, probably.
I stand ready. I stand clear. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee, the duties of trustee, the best of my ability.
Are you swearing hands, this officer?
I have raised my hands.
I stand ready. I stand clear. You solemnly swear, you solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Washington and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee, the duties of trustee, the best of my ability.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the We Are Montgomery photo. This is our video. This is video number four.
Thank you. We are proud to introduce the next video. This is the fourth in our series of We Are Montgomery. Tonight's video features Kevin, Public Works Maintenance Worker II and Resident of Montgomery for more than two decades. We are proud of all of our staff, many of whom not only serve our community but choose to call it home. It's a unique perspective that strengthens our identity, commitment to our residents, and fuels the spirit of who we are. We chose to show this video today as it highlights our Public Works Department showcasing the shared pride, purpose, and sense of belonging that make the Village of Montgomery truly special. It seems very fitting for our next item on our agenda, the Public Works Week proclamation. I want to take a moment to thank Kevin, Erica, Gina, Debbie, and many other staff and elected officials who have held supporting roles in the videos that we've seen thus far. This has turned into a very special project and one that we should all be very proud of.
Kevin, this might be a little awkward for you.
My name's Kevin. I work with the Village of Montgomery Public Works Department. I've been with the Village for going on seven years now. Living in the community and working for the village at the same time, it makes me take a lot of pride in what I do, and not just what I do, but what we as a staff do altogether. I mean, when I go out and hear a concern a resident has, it makes me want to address it because if it was my concern, I would want it addressed. So it makes it a personal connection to each and every resident that I interact with. In '04, my family moved us out here to Fairfield Foxmore neighborhood. So I've been a resident of Montgomery since '04. You know, sticking around here, close to work, for me is important. I like to be available when things go, when we have water main breaks, when snow happens. I like to be able to come in quickly and get here. If there is ever an emergency, I can respond really quick. For my wife and I, it's just a great neighborhood, great, great village to raise a family. And my wife also works in Montgomery. So it's just, Montgomery's home. It's where we are. I think the average resident doesn't know how much Public Works is involved in. I mean, we do snow plowing, street repairs, grass cutting, garbage picking, street signs, streetlights, stoplights, tree maintenance, emergency road closures, events set up. I think because Montgomery has a little bit of that small town vibe, and I know myself, as well as a few other guys that are in the Public Works staff, live in Montgomery. So as a whole, we really just care about what we're doing. We care about making it a better place for the future, and not just for our future, but for future generations to come.
Kevin. Perfect. All right. So with that, tonight, we are proud to recognize the dedicated professionals who keep our community running. As we present the 2025 Public Works Week proclamation, we honor the essential services provided by our Public Works team for maintaining our roads and water systems to ensure our public spaces are clean, safe, and accessible. Their hard So there may be other incidental costs related to taking over the project that would not be covered with this change. The other one being that the language revisions take away the village's option to have the village or the surety company complete the improvements, and it gives the surety company the first right to take over the project rather than the village. So those are the two major changes. So we are looking for the village board's approval with this. We approved the final plat and the PUD amendment back in September, which reduced the required bond amount to only 55% of the engineer's estimate if a TIF incentive agreement was approved. We did approve the TIF incentive agreement last month, and so as they're moving through the process, this is their next step is to get the bond approved so we can issue the site development permit. So we do have a representative from the developer here to answer any questions that you might have. He's on the Zoom call.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions of staff?
No, I, I just have a few comments. When I first looked at this, I thought, I'm not going to approve this. But once I, I got into it, because you know, the all costs were kind of problematic for me, but it listed the costs that we will be reimbursed for, which are attorney's fees, accounting fees, testing, on and on and on. So I'm going to presume that the all costs that they're talking about is like staff time. That's, that's not in here.
It was a catch-all.
Right.
Right?
So, so they, they pretty, it's, it's pretty much sentence in, in the four corners here of the costs that we can incur, which are quite extensive. And the other thing that kind of troubled me was the language where they could have first right to take over the project, but there is a time limit on that. So they have to do that within 30 days. They don't, after 30 days, then it comes to us. So I'm fine with that also. Because when I first saw that, I thought, oh, great, we're going to be messing with this for years trying to get them to perform. But that 30 days gives them 30 days. If they don't, then after that time, then we can take over and move forward. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
And this is not inconsistent with the bond language of other communities, ones that I've seen at work. It's not wholly different from that. Just, it just, it doesn't limit, but it specifically calls out exactly what their exposure is, which is why it's important to them. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Oh, thanks. Thanks, Sonia. The second one, B, is ordinance 2130, amending Village Code Section 3-11 to grant a Class N liquor license to Apex Nails at 1258 Ogden Avenue. This is a waiver first reading and passage on the second. Director App.
Yes, thank you. So Apex Nails came before you last month, requesting consideration of a liquor license for their nail salon. You directed staff to work with them to go ahead and apply for the liquor license. So they have done that. So we are bringing the ordinance before you to create the open license for them, for us to be able to issue the liquor license.
Everything good with the police chief? Everything for the liquor license?
All the background checks were passed.
Okay. All that's good.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Perfect.
Trustee Guyer. Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Nick Carey, six zero. Thank you. All right. Item C tonight is an amendment of, to the Village of Montgomery Agreement to Services with PISO Associates. That's it. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley.
I thought that maybe there was going to be more to that.
Kept it short. Tonight is, as you stated, an amendment with PISO and Associates for the native basing contract. This would encompass both general fund money and the SSAs. What we are looking to amend is the term of the contract. So originally, the contract stated that the contract would expire in December of 2025, so at the end of this calendar year. However, staff recognized that this does not align with the village's fiscal year, so reached out to the contractor to see if they would be amenable to hold their prices until April 30th of 2026, which would align with the village's fiscal year, which time we would move forward with bidding out the project prior to budgeting for the fiscal '27 year to help us align those costs and make sure we come in where we need to for budgeting for the following fiscal year. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Motion to approve.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Item D, Resolution 2025-012, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for participation in the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So as the village is aware, the village has not utilized the assistance of the IPVAN services, but however, we have participated in rendering aid to other communities. It is an organization that has proven to be extremely valuable tool for communities to be able to use and utilize in times of need. So there are a few changes that were proposed from their Board of Trustees. So tonight, we are asking the village board to adopt those changes. One specifically is just changing the need from only, not only limiting to emergency services, but also being able to aid other communities in non-disaster or, or weather-related events when those times of need come in. Others related to language with non-for-profit. And then the third is just a process in which their board can approve changes and amendments to their bylaws. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time. And there's attached is the information and changes in your board packet.
Thank you. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Go ahead, Debbie.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Nick Carey, six to zero. Thank you. Last item for separate action tonight is PSA with EEI for the Lake Michigan WIFIa Due Diligence. Director Maluski.
Thank you, President Brawley. So I have the PSA with EEI for assistance on the WIFIa application. We've submitted our application in September of 2024. We've been working with EEI and US EPA on a biweekly basis, meeting as we get through our underwriting for the WIFIa loan. We are anticipating to close sometime this fall, but with, you know, new developments, ensuring that we keep this piece moving forward as started and ensuring its success is important. So that's why we have the PSA here for the $30,000 with EEI. This also ensures some of those pieces that we've been working with, with Stantec as well throughout the process. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Questions?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Nick Carey, six to zero. Thank you. All right. Moving on to items for discussion, we don't have anything, newer unfinished business to come tonight.
Two items. Go ahead.
Could we get an update on the bridge lighting, please?
So we have been working with the lighting manufacturer, actually working through the lighting rep, representative for the manufacturer, and trying to get answers. So we did a process in the winter, it was, I believe, in February, where we, the contractor performed some grounding on the DMX cabling. So it was agreed upon at that time that the lights are malfunctioning. The next step, there was a meeting last Monday between the rep and the manufacturer, as well as the contractor. They're want to basically ensure that everything is bench tested before it comes out, so all the new lighting, to make sure that all of the grounding systems are correct. So that way, this problem won't reoccur when the new fixtures are, are put out. So just kind of a, an extra layer of protection, trying to make sure that when we make the swap out of those fixtures, that everything's working properly.
When will this problem be resolved?
That I don't have an ETA on, but we are pushing the contractor or the, the lighting manufacturer to get that done as soon as possible. June, July timeframe is what we're pushing for.
No. We've been sitting here and we've been asking for answers, and we keep not getting answers. And it's just, the answer that we get is the same thing that's regurgitated that we had before. Was the taxpayer money, if the lighting was defective or the grounding was defective, was the taxpayer money that paid for this defective? I'm assuming we paid for this, correct? In full?
Correct. Yes, the original project, correct.
So I sit here as a steward of the taxpayer's money, and I'm saying this isn't good enough. This is not good enough. We've asked numerous times for updates. And I want you to know that whenever a village board member asks for something, don't sit on it. We're not going to wait five or six months. We should be able to have answers within one or two meetings. This has been going on long enough where we've had to sit here and keep asking for the same things and we get the same answers. It's not good enough.
I would echo Steve's concern, that I think everybody shares that, that the lights went out. This is just a major malfunction for the, for the light, for the lighting manufacturer, I believe. I don't know all the details. Also know that they have agreed to fix the situation. We're just trying to figure out exactly how this doesn't happen again. So I, I think that last bit that you mentioned was the first time I had heard that. I know you guys met last week and I think today to talk over things. So I appreciate it. I know that you share our concern that this thing be brought to an end quickly, because I know it's a thorn in your side as well.
Are, are there any other, is this, either this contractor or this manufacturer, are we using any of their other products in the village? And this contractor, are we using him for anything else in the village?
So the, the contractor is not the issue. The contractor has actually been diligent on the village's behalf to try to resolve this issue. So, you know, I wouldn't place blame on the contractor. In fact, you know, the process that have been done throughout the testing have solidified that the contractor performed the installation properly and the wiring properly. They were instructed by the manufacturer to not do the DMX grounding. And so that's where the manufacturer is right now, is they want to ensure that that process is correct before we implement the replacement of the light. So to the contractor's defense, they, they have not been in default or, or negligent in this. But however, it, it falls on the, the manufacturer of the lighting, to which they have personally, to me, you know, indicated their, their failure of their product and have, you know, verbally given me that they are going to replace those, which the contractor has the lights in hand. So again, we have the product. It's just ensuring that we don't replicate the problem again when this reinstallation comes up. Also, who's paying the contractor for, for that work? So that's what we're trying to push.
We've already paid the contractor for the work.
Correct.
At some point, this is begun, going to become a legal issue.
There is a possibility of that.
So I want to know what date this is going to be resolved. We, we've talked about this long enough. I want to know what date this is going to be resolved.
He's not going to give you a date because he doesn't have, he said June, July. But I would also add that it sounds like he's making, we have the lights.
June, July, June, July of which year? We've been talking about this for a while now.
I will continue to push as I do week to week with the contractor.
Not enough.
Administrator Soful's been on the, the email chains as well, of back and forth. Staff has not been reluctant to push this issue and, and look for answers and a resolution to the problem. So we are, we are equally frustrated with the process and the manufacturer. We've been told a lot of things that haven't come to fruition, so I echo your frustration.
I don't think you do.
At what point do we just?
Let's focus on the issue.
So at what point do we just say we want a full refund? Get all of our money back? We're not paying this contractor for troubleshooting, are we?
No.
We've not paid any more than the, the initial amount of the contract?
Nope.
So, yes, so at what point do we tell the manufacturer, we're done? I mean, you know, where are we getting out of this? I mean, what, what is our warranty on this lighting? One year?
Correct.
Are they going to give us a five-year warranty for our trouble?
No.
Yeah, exactly. So when, when do we say, we want our money back? Get out of our village. Quit jerking us around. Give us our money back. We'll go someplace else.
This is turning into another truck, is what it's turning into, where we got three, three price adds. And you can sit there and snicker. I mean, I don't, I don't care. At this point, I don't care. We need to get this resolved. I'm tired of asking the same damn questions.
Is that an option to just?
That's not something that we've proposed to the manufacturer, but if that's the pleasure of the board, it's definitely something we can take back to them.
So I, I was actually thinking along the same lines as trusty Guyer. I mean, clearly, there's other manufacturers out there where we could get the products and where it's going to work and we're not going to be going through all these, these troubles.
There, there's a potential that there are other manufacturers. So we looked at different manufacturers in the original process. We looked at a different company from the start, which we elected not to go with because they had some issues with their, their regional rep, some other issues. So this was the contractor that, or the manufacturer that we had settled on. They've had this product in their product line for multiple years. It's installed on iconic buildings such as the John Hancock Building in Chicago and other places. We're being told that this is a unique problem in our instance. Again, I have no reason to believe otherwise, but again, we continue to push through it. There are multitude of options, but, you know, I think there's one item to be learned from this, too, is that no matter what we do, accessing the side of the bridge in the future for any type of, of service and troubleshooting is, is going to be a problematic issue. So if it's the pleasure of the board to remove, you know, and, and look for a reimbursement, I think staff would definitely move forward with that recommendation as well because of, of the cost implement with accessing the side of the bridge to, to service these lights in the future. But again, happy to take direction.
So if we were to give them a hard deadline of, it needs to be fixed by the end of this month. If it's not fixed, we want the refund and we're, we're, you're done. You're not going to have any more business in the Village of Montgomery. We're done. And we move on with a different manufacturer.
I think that's something that we would talk to with our attorney to see how we would draft that language to them and, and what authority we have to do that. But it's, again, absolutely something we could propose.
And I mean a refund of all cost, which is not the cost of the lights, everything that we spent to date. I, I mean, I appreciate that these lights are on the John Hancock Building, but if this was an issue, do you think the management company, the John Hancock Building?
John Hancock Building wouldn't be waiting for a response.
For two years? I mean, this is what, a two-year? Are we two years now?
Uh, not quite.
Yeah, getting close, though, because it was prior to the Montgomery Fest two years ago. It's when we wanted them up.
Okay. So staff has been working on this. It sounds like we're very close. It sounds like, and I, I like your angle, is to pressure, put some pressure on the situation to try and have them give you a date that they can have it installed by or have it completed by, with them paying for the installation of it. If that's unlikely or not possible, or you have concerns about this light going forward, maybe we do go that second route. But I think that's probably what we'll have to talk about at like the next meeting, is if they can't give us a date, they can't move things forward, it's not really going to happen, we're exposed in the future to, to this happening again, then maybe we bail on the whole idea, assuming we get our money back. But I'm just not sure how realistic that is. I don't know. Will you update us?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
That, that was my first.
I know.
My second one. I still don't see the engine completed with the landscape contract.
In what areas are you specifically talking about?
The areas behind my house or the areas along Fox, are the areas along Gordon completed?
So the contractor, Ed Pfaff, our forestry supervisor who manages the contract, met with the owner of the company last Monday and also met with them, I believe it was Tuesday this week, to follow up on the items that aren't getting done. So again, they are not being paid for any of these items until they are done satisfactory.
We just gave them a renewal that started today is what date? The 12th? This started 12 days ago.
Correct.
For a one-year with the option for a two-year. What I would like to see, it's too late for the one-year. I'd like to see us limited at one year. I'd like to see us go out to bid next year for the following year.
And I think staff at this time would, would agree with that statement, so.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Nicer ones. Deification committee.
I thought that was more.
Is doing bridge planting on May 17th, and our floral judging will be June 11th, so keep those dates open.
Awesome. See firm dates. I'm just kidding. All right. All right. So that's it?
I've got one.
Oh, go ahead. Thank you for saying that.
I defer my friend, Mr. Ball. The gentleman from?
You, Montgomery?
Montgomery. I'm also from Montgomery, just got a gentleman.
You had made a statement about us being stewards of this, this village and kind of just carrying over until those that are going to be coming after us take, take over, which is wonderful. So I was thinking, I would like to entertain, or this board entertain, creating a committee, maybe some board members, some staff, a couple of citizens to focus on a major corridor that's coming into town, the Orchard Road corridor. We're going to have this great monument sign at Gas and Wash coming in, and this is going to be a major gateway coming through to whenever that proposed cricket stadium may or may not come to fruition, but all the way to Tuscany. And I'd like to see a really concept detailed plan of what that major corridor is going to look like to help Patrick. We've been throwing tidbits at him left and right and companies, and what we like to see. at him left and right and companies, and what we'd like to see. But I'd like to get some community input, our input, and what that corridor is going to look like. I don't want it to just be a hodgepodge of truck depots and warehouses, and we, maybe we want this, maybe we want that. But I would like us to focus in on a, on a really, kind of a narrow concept of what that gateway through Montgomery is gonna look like. So I'd like the board to just consider that for the future.
I have.
Not long, not five-year future, but maybe within the, a year's timeframe, we could maybe put that committee together, get some community input. We know we're not gonna get a Trader Joe's, or Trader Joe's on Orchard Road, and we're limited to what's going to come through there. But big concepts of what we want that to, to look like visually, conceptually, types of businesses. Give a real roadmap of, of what we want that to look like, so that Patrick can really narrow in, and, and Sonia and our whole team can, can develop what we want that corridor to look like.
Can we do that with Douglas Road Corridor, Teresa? Wasn't there a committee or something?
There was a task force.
A task force?
Sorry. There was a task force, yes. We did to a point, not, not to the extent of what Trustee Baumann is talking about. But yeah, we were trying to be very intentional about what was going there. And I think it was more of, these are the things we don't want versus these are the things we want.
Well, it can be that, but also what I, and I think many of the citizens would, would agree, is that we don't need three, four, or five, six little strip malls of three or four stores with, no offense to, but nail salons and other dry cleaners and, and things like that. But maybe some, some.
Mattress.
Mattress banks, you know, et cetera. But if we could at least have an image that, that can be marketed to developers of what that could look like, we see that going from, I guess my fear or my thought is that with 47 being widened all the way up to 88, that in all that wide open land there, that's almost going to be a natural, I think, jumping point from those stores that are Naperville or Route 34, is to just bypass Montgomery in its entirety and go out to, to 47 as Yorkville continues to grow out towards Sherwood Grove. So I would like the Village of Montgomery to at least have a fighting chance of developing that corridor with some of those stores and those investments before it goes all the way out to 47.
Cool. I'd heard that before. Let's let staff chew on that. And.
And it's a big ask, but I think it's an important one.
Yes. Yes to both. So will you take a brainstorm on that and get back to us?
And so I just have, Friday is cop on top. Go to Dunkin' Donuts, get some donuts, give our officers some love, say hello. And for those of you that don't want to be late to work, it starts at 5:00 AM. Jennifer?
Which, which Dunkin's?
Orchard Road.
Gas and Wash?
Yeah. And Douglas Road.
Got it.
So those two.
Orchard and Douglas. Got it. Okay, cool.
It goes from 5 till noon.
Perfect. All right. Anything else? Okay. Future meetings, you can see them there. Of note, the US Route 30 Pedestrian Bridge Public Info Meeting is this Thursday evening. And then our next Village Board Meeting and Intergov will be two weeks from tonight, on, actually not two weeks from tonight, Tuesday, the day after Memorial Day, at, starting at 6:00 PM, maybe? Read the agenda. The Intergov?
Oh.
Pedestrian Bridge is at PD?
Yes.
Yes.
It's onsite. That'd be awesome. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion, actually, adjourned to executive session to discuss the employment of employee pursuant to 5LCS 120 over 2C1.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes. Thanks. We're adjourned.